The open school committee meeting of Thursday, April 11. I apologize to those of you in the audience. We had to have an executive session and there was no getting around it, so apologies. And the first thing we want to do is to point everybody to the calendar. You can see where our meetings and subcommittee meetings are going to be. And what I'd like to do is to go to the consent agenda, which includes the past records of March 14 and 21, and the establishment of Jose Zasquez Vinasco, the Courage and Excellence Scholarship. And if I'm not mistaken, Jose was here earlier this academic year. Is that right, Dr. Lupini?
Yes. He was a recipient of the superintendent's award about a month, I believe, prior to his passing.
Right. So we're fortunate to have that scholarship and sad that he's not here. So do we have a motion for the consent agenda, please? I have Rebecca Stone, who's moved, and thank you, Mr. Chen, for seconding. Are there any questions hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We have a presentation and discussion regarding the high school Cambodia trip, I believe. Up next.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Mr. Green. Mr. Green, how are you? Nice to see you here.
I'm doing great. I was just thinking that this is the first time in a while that I haven't been up in front of the school committee. So it's good. The last, I think since I've started here, it's been three or four times per year. So it's great to be here. And I just wanted to thank the school committee, Dr. Lupini, Jennifer Fisher Mueller, Betsy Fitzpatrick, for supporting the Brookline-Cambodia partnership in our trip the last couple of years. We know that this is a unique trip and something that not all school districts would be as behind and as supportive of as this one. And we really, really appreciate your commitment to global education and in particular this trip. And so that said, I'd like to introduce our two trip chaperones that went on the 2012 trip, Gary Schiffman, Cara McKenna, and our students who will introduce. Maybe you guys can introduce yourselves.
Mr. Green, can I just say something before you leave? And that is that I'd like to remind everybody that it was you who took the initiative to create this entire program. And so without you, we wouldn't have the program. And we're indebted to you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hi. So we'll be-
You have to talk. Also, people at home can see you on TV. You're on TV. That's it.
Hi. So we'll be speaking with you briefly about the trip that we took to Cambodia this past February, over February vacation and the week following. And before we start, we'll all introduce ourselves. So my name is Anna Russo. I'm a senior. And there's also one member of the group who cannot make it here, and so I'll just name her, Janice Lee, who's also a senior.
I'm Bella Conway, and I am a sophomore.
I'm Eliza Fox, and I am a junior.
I'm Alia Buckner, and I'm also a junior.
Good evening. I'm Sophia Celeste Voss. I'm a sophomore.
So our first stop on our trip was in Phnom Penh, the capital of Cambodia. And I think one of the most influential pieces of being in the city was the extreme difference in lifestyle that they lead there as opposed to here in America. They, there's, the living is a lot more cramped and stacked on top of each other, and it's a lot more crowded, and there are a lot, a lot of people living on the streets.
So one of the, one of my favorite parts of the trip was when we went to the markets in Phnom Penh, and there are, there was a food market right next to the hotel we were staying in, and it was a big culture shock because there's lots of different foods and smells and that I, well, we had never experienced before. And as you can see, there's like bugs and animal hearts. So that was a very different thing to be exposed to.
We also got to see the Royal Palace, which was really an amazing, an amazing experience because of how elaborate and beautiful the architecture is. And it was our first chance to see a temple, a Buddhist temple, in Cambodia.
So while in Phnom Penh, we met with several different NGOs. We met with the Somali Mom Foundation, which works with human trafficking. We met with the Cambodia Living Arts Program, Harpswell Leadership Dorms, and we also visited the tribunals where they are trying the leaders of the Khmer Rouge. And so Cambodia Living Arts was run by Arnhorn Pond, who we also met later on in the trip. And I think the organization that we kind of had the biggest connection with was the Harpswell Leadership Dorm. It provides a place for girls to stay while they are going to university in the capital. And it was really amazing to meet them because like I, once I met them, I felt that I realized I take my education for granted, and it was just amazing to meet these women who are so determined and motivated to work so hard to achieve something that is kind of just given to us easily.
And the girl in the center of the photograph of the three girls in the bottom left-hand corner, she'll be going to Boden next year for medicine. She got a scholarship, and we'd love to get her to come to Brookline and speak with us. So this is when we got to meet Arnhorn Pond himself. He's the man in the bright orange life jacket in the photo there. We went swimming with him and the Mekong River, and we also took a tuk-tuk vehicle there, which you can see. And it was really amazing to get to meet with him because we all found his goal for his organization, the Cambodia Living Arts, to be really, really inspirational. He wishes to change Cambodia's legacy from being a country that had a mass genocide that is living in poverty to a country that is filled with culture. He hopes to bring back music and performing arts through his organization.
So on one of the more harder moments of the trip, we visited Toolslang, which used to be a high school, but the Khmer Rouge turned it into a prison where they torture the prisoners. And it was, it was hard to be there, but it was a really important part of the trip because it's a big part of Cambodia's history, and it was just hard to kind of grasp the fact that I was, like, we were in the same place where all those terrible things had happened. So yeah, it was a very different experience, something I never felt before.
Right after we visited the killing fields, which is where the prisoners from Toolslang were taken to be executed into mass graves that you can see there, the stupa that's pictured there also has all of those bones that have been found on the grounds. And it was a similar experience to the Toolslang because it was really, really hard to imagine that right now you were walking through this mass grave of people that were executed for things as simple as being educated or wearing glasses. And it was just, it was a really, really moving experience for all of us.
So the second part of our trip, we went to Preyavahere, which is, it was about a five-hour drive there, and the main thing that we went to see there was the Brookline-Sammon School, which our, the Cambodia Club at Brookline High School has been raising, we raised money to build the school, and then this year we raised money to get an English teacher there and also a computer. So this was the school. And when we got there, all the kids were waiting to greet us there. And it was, it was a Sunday, so they weren't in school, but a lot of them had come to the school just to like talk to us and like interact with us, which was really cool. And we, so the first thing that we did there, when we got there, was we got a tour. So we got to see this computer, which we like raised the money to buy, and like we got to see they were practicing their typing, which was really cool. And also something interesting that we found out was, we knew that we had built this school, and we knew that it had four classrooms, and we had assumed that all four classrooms were being used as like classrooms for like educational purposes. But what we found out when we got there was actually two of the classrooms were being used to house the teachers because they didn't have any kind of living space. So there was like beds and food in the classrooms, and only two of them were being used to teach the students. So that was really interesting because we like never had thought, had even like thought of that before. And yeah, so this is one of those classrooms. And so then what we did after the tour was, we went into a classroom with all of the kids, and we had a translator too. So then they spoke a mixture of like English and Khmer, and we got to ask them pretty much anything we wanted to. And I think one of the most interesting things that we asked was, we asked if they wanted to go on to like continue their education and go to high school. And they were all responded really enthusiastically, like, "Yeah." And then we asked them if they wanted to go to college, and they all said, "Yeah." And then we asked them if their parents wanted them to go to college or continue their education, and they all responded like very surely, "No." So that was really interesting, just to see how kind of education is not nearly as like much part of their culture as it is here. And like for them, because they're living in such like a rural place, like for their parents, education kind of seems kind of useless because the majority of them will probably not ever leave this small village. So what good does an education do if they're going to be like farming for the rest of their lives? So that was kind of like a big obstacle that we kind of saw there, and that was just really interesting to experience. And so after we left the school and we went to go see some of their houses, and the original purpose of that was we actually wanted to interview their parents to kind of find out their experience with education and just kind of like hear about their lives. So we thought that that would be really interesting. But then when we got there, when we got to the village, we found out that actually, it was really surprising that it's basically an entire village of children and their parents. So there's like, it's a village of 8,000, and only about like 40 or something of the kids are actually going to this school. And the rest of the parents and the rest of the kids are going to rice fields to work every day, and they stay there for months at a time. So the kids that are attending the school are just staying in their houses by themselves. So there were, there was only like one or two adults there, and the kids were like living alone completely. So we didn't get to interview any parents, but that was something that was really like interesting to find out because we had no idea that that was the case. So that was definitely very shocking, just to see how different their lives could be. So that was really interesting. And, and then we went back, and we went to visit a zoo there, and we saw, we met a man who was from the United States originally, and he's been living there for a really long time. And it was interesting to hear his kids' experience at the school, at their local school, and he actually has taken them out of the school now. But he, what he said was, a lot of the teachers like never show up, and that it's kind of like taken not as seriously at all. He didn't think that they were getting a great education. So that was really interesting for us to hear after we had just visited our school. And it was just like a very interesting kind of experience to have right after that. And this is another school that we also visited, and it was a similar situation there.
So we spent the third portion of our trip in Siem Reap, which is the tourist hub of Cambodia. Anyone that's ever been to Cambodia has gone because they've gone to Siem Reap to see Angkor Wat. And it was quite a change to go there from Preyavahere Province, which is by far the farthest I've ever felt from home, just completely off the grid, to Siem Reap, which is much more cosmopolitan, fancy hotels, clean, you can go to the ATM and take out dollar bills. And so it was a total contrast. But it was great to go to Siem Reap and to see an aspect of history that is often very glossed over, if not completely omitted, from any history class you've ever taken, but which is a really interesting melange of Buddhism and Hinduism and Indian culture, Chinese culture. And so it was awesome to see all of that.
Our first stop when we arrived in Siem Reap was this temple. It's called Prey Rup. The temples in Siem Reap are from the Angkor period, which is many, many, many years ago, much before the modern history that oftentimes people focus on when talking about Cambodia. We, the whole, all the temples are being, all the temples are being re, they're, yeah, they're being restored by different European countries, thank you. And so it's very interesting to see the difference between temples that have been restored and temples that have yet to be restored. And so we got to see a lot of contrast because in one temple, half will be restored, and the other half has yet to be restored. But they're all very beautiful. It's a part of this ancient world that we can still see now.
So we started off our first day in Siem Reap. So after seeing sunset at Prey Rup, we went, we woke up early in the morning to view sunrise at this temple called Ta Phrom. And so it, it's quite famous, and you've probably seen this picture before. But it was really beautiful to be there in the morning alone, without all the tourists, and see the nature and the ancient architecture together in this symbiotic relationship. And it's, it's actually quite like spiritual place to see like the trees growing with their roots over these ancient buildings, and it was one of my favorite parts of the trip.
We went on a bike ride through Angkor Thom, which is a temple complex. We were with a tour guide there, and he explained to us all the stories that are shown in different carvings on all the temple walls from textbooks, the same stories are in the textbooks that we've read when we're talking about Hinduism in ninth grade history. And it was very interesting for me to see the stories that, which we've read, to be shown on the wall for the people who experienced them and believed them.
So this was another interesting temple within the Angkor complex. It's called the Banyan Temple, and so it had lots of faces of the Buddha. But one really interesting part of the, of all of Angkor Wat that we noticed is that you can see throughout history the change between Hinduism and Buddhism, and back to Hinduism and back to Buddhism as different people take control. Because what they'll do is you can't quite see it on these heads, and I'm not sure if it got, if it occurred on these heads, but Buddhists would build a temple, and then Hindu rulers would come in, take over the region, and then they would draw Shiva's third eye on top, on Buddha's forehead, and then that would automatically transform the temple into a Hindu temple. And so you would see all these Buddha's, Buddha's faces with Shiva's third eye on them, and it, it, like, you can't see something like that at any, anywhere else in the world.
We had a cooking class while we were in Siem Reap at a very nice restaurant. We had been eating delicious, really, really great Cambodian food the entire time we were there. But we, I had never tried Cambodian food before going there, and the ability to prepare some of the foods that I was really enjoying eating was so fun. We went to the market before, and we purchased the ingredients for what we were going to make. We each made an appetizer, a main course, a dessert for each person, so we learned lots of different recipes, and we kept them. And we had, we really gained an appreciation for all the different pastes that you have to make from, you know, you start off with ginger and spices and all sorts of things, and then we made it into a paste, and that was what was going on top of our fish. So it was a really interesting experience, and we gained a lot of appreciation for how much time and effort goes into making Cambodian food.
So we started off the next day with sunrise at Angkor Wat, and the picture pretty much speaks for itself. It is incredibly beautiful, and that's just, it's, it'll be one of my fondest memories of the trip.
The, later that day, we went to a floating village called Ton Sap Lake. This floating village is protected by the UN. It's a UNESCO World Heritage Site. I come from a place that is a UNESCO World Heritage Site, and so it was, I've never seen another one. It was very interesting to see the contrast between different types. And so as you can see, all the houses are on stilts for when the rainy season comes, and they are just surrounded by river. The children came down while we were on the boat to greet us. We got a chance to go onto the, I guess, the mainland of the area, and we saw the schools there and all the people who live there. The vast majority of the residents are fishermen, and so it was just so, so fascinating to see something so different, something I'd never seen anything like that before. So I, that was definitely a highlight for me to see such contrast.
So then we left the cities and we left the temples for a little while and drove out to a nearby sacred mountain where we hiked up and then bathed in an enchanted river. And so it was really nice to have this spiritual experience, but also to just kind of get a chance to connect with the beautiful nature that is Cambodia.
The last temple that we went to is called Ban Te Soray. It's the woman's temple. It's very different than the other temples we saw. It's much smaller, and it's made out of a pink stone, so the actual stone looks different. It's called the woman's temple because, as you can see how, how finite and how meticulous the carvings are, it's said that they could only have been carved by a woman. And for a lot of us, this is our favorite temple, just because it was, it was so unique and so just, you know, so much, can, I can't even imagine the detail that went in to making it.
So that concluded our trip, and we all learned a lot and shared a lot of really fantastic experiences that I know we would be happy to share with you if you have any questions or want to talk to us about it.
Questions? Ms. Stone?
So thank you all. This is always a real treat for us, to live vicariously through the trips that you guys take. So I was curious, in the, in the school that was set up, and in one of the schools that you visited, both of them had computers, but this is clearly very rural, off the grid. I think, Anna, you said it was. So what's providing the electricity, and is there any internet connectivity for the kids at all?
There's a generator, but no internet, and it's not feasible at all to get any internet there.
I think the one at our school is solar powered.
Yeah, solar powered.
Wow.
Hopefully in the future, there will be some form of internet access for the people there. It's so isolated that the, it took us two hours to get there, and if there had been a real road, it probably would have taken us like 30 minutes. So like the isolation is so extreme that access to the internet would be huge. I mean, just seeing people from outside and things happening outside. So hopefully one day we'll get there, but it is very rural, and it is a process to get that running.
So is part of what you're providing software for use on the computers, or is that not a big part of what the-
Well, so far, we haven't focused on any specific software. It was just like getting the computer there, just like, like learn typing and technology. It was like the first introduction of any sort of type of technology. So we're working like on that as of now.
Is the school, I'm sorry to keep on-
That's okay.
Is the school, so generators are probably few and far between there, right? Is the school one of the few places that has a generator in that area?
Well, our school uses solar power for the-
Oh, okay.
And the school in the village, there's a town generator that powers the-
Oh, there is, okay.
-school and the village. But the school, so the second picture of the school that you saw, that's in a significantly larger village.
Yeah. It's a lot closer to other towns.
And that's like on a paved road rather than needing like an off-road vehicle to get to the village where our school is.
Ms. Kershaw?
Thank you for your presentation and for your bravery in going on this trip and having this adventure. I'm wondering sort of individually and collectively, like what, what happens now? How does that, how does it, how does the global education that you built before you went during and now, what does it mean for you individually and collectively around what, what you learned there and how you use it?
Well, I've always been really interested in global education. I gave a presentation here two years ago because I went on the China exchange. So this is, instead of like jump-starting my interest in Asia and international relations, this is kind of a, another step on the way. But something that really interested me on this trip in particular was the combination of visiting the schools and the education aspect of it as well as the sex trafficking and the contact that we had with the Somali Mom Foundation and the issues of non-mandatory education and just women not getting enough education. So also seeing the Harpswell Dorm and seeing these women and seeing that there's so much the future of Cambodia. I'm now writing a research paper in my gov class and also meeting with some senators from Maryland and North Carolina, I think, on women's education and US foreign aid to countries and how that should be more devoted to women's education, and as well as how the incorporation of reproductive health in some of that. Education can really do a lot to help developing countries, and so I'm in the process of all that research right now. And I'm definitely gonna speak to my experiences in Cambodia in that process.
Do any of you guys have anything else to add?
Well, unlike Anna, I have never been to Asia before, before this trip. So it was very different, and it like kind of increased my passion in traveling. And I definitely, after going on this trip, I know that I really want my future career to involve traveling and education because there's so much more that can be done. And I, after, after meeting with many kids in the schools, it just like increased how, my, like my interest in the subject.
I'm definitely still processing my experiences in Cambodia, to be completely honest with you all. But it is, the, those two weeks are something that I think about on a daily basis, something that affects the way I think and my decisions and my opinions, just across the board, I think. Cambodian people are so kind and loving. Cambodians have real soul and are very quick to accept people from the outside, even though people from the outside have only come to exploit and hurt them in the past. Just the, so I mean, the entire experience is just so moving, and it's just opened my eyes to so many things I didn't know about the world, but also has maybe changed the way I think about people a little bit, just because I've seen something so different and so, so beautiful. So even though I'm still processing my experiences, I, I do think about it often, and it does affect me quite a bit.
My experience was kind of similar to Bella's. It also kind of sparked a passion inside of me for global education, and it's definitely something that I hope to continue in my future. And I think one of the things that stood out for all of us was the Harpswell Dorms because it's such like a simple idea. They're providing dorms for women because men, when they go to college, they stay with monks, and obviously women can't do that. So it's such like a simple idea, but it's clearly making such an impact, and it's giving these women a chance. The women are like, kind of like picked out, like selected from these extremely rural towns, similar to like the Sammon, the kids who would go to the Sammon School. And just to see like how much of a difference that was making was, I think, really amazing to all of us, and made us all kind of wanted to continue doing something similar to that. And now the Cambodia Club at the high school, we're trying to get more involved with that organization, and we just contacted Alan Lightman, who started the organization and actually lives in Concord. So we're hoping to meet with him and kind of revolve some of the club like around that issue. So that's something that is definitely in our future.
So I was pleased to hear that the Hindu stories that you learned in your history class enriched your travels when you went to Cambodia and saw those in action. And that's exactly what we hope, is that the education that you provided at Brookline High School enriches your travels throughout your life, and we know that the travels that you've done will enrich your education at Brookline High School as well as your classmates. What would you say to kids who are thinking about going on this trip for next year? How would you help to recruit them?
Well, I think that encouraging this trip is definitely something that we're all really, really keen on doing. I think part of it is, has to do with the fact that you can connect our education that we've had here in Brookline to Cambodia, but also is the fact that we can enrich it further. Because a lot of, I think in my history classes, I don't know about yours, but the Khmer Rouge is kind of something that we mentioned for maybe part, half of the day. So we're aware of it, but it's not really something really well-known, but it's such a devastating event that happened in history and affected Cambodia so greatly that I think it's something really important to know. And just to also see the lifestyle that is there in Cambodia that is so different from here is also, I think, a really, really valuable experience because I know it definitely opened my eyes to a lot of other things that are going on in this world that I didn't know about. I wasn't prepared to see so many people living on the streets. I wasn't prepared to see so little enthusiasm and education. It was just, there were a lot of many surprising things that I saw there that I would definitely encourage other kids to have the experience of seeing. Anything else you want to say? I, I would definitely encourage men, like almost everyone in the, like in the high school to apply to this trip because it's such a unique experience and opportunity that a lot of other schools don't give to students, and it's just such a different culture. And I think it's important for students in Brookline to be exposed to like different cultures in the world, and I think that it's something that you can, like, I can relate to. Like the kids in the school, like in education, I think it's really important to learn about like different opinions and like different sides of things that are in Brookline.
Can I just say one more thing?
So a lot of times, people would ask me, "Why are you going to Cambodia?" And what I would respond and what I would say to anyone that I'm recommending the trip to, I mean, most of my friends are seniors-
to, I mean, most of my friends are seniors, so they don't have the opportunity to go on it. But is that, so, when I was in China, I would talk to people and some, some people that I talked to, or that we would learn about, had been to China in the seventies or in the eighties. And they had seen it then, and that was really valuable to them. And they had formed this really long connection with China and had the amazing experience of watching it rebuild itself from the Cultural Revolution into what it is today. And so, they got to see China when it was raw and it was like real China. And, I mean, I loved my experience in China, but I didn't get to see it in the eighties. I wasn't born in the eighties. But what I think is really fantastic about this trip to Cambodia is that you can really, like, by going now, you can still see the effects of the Khmer Rouge. All these people are still alive and still interacting with, with each other. Now, there still are Khmer Rouge soldiers and victims living next door to each other. And that's not gonna be true for many more years. And also, very, there are people that go to Cambodia, but the people that go to Cambodia usually go on their like Mekong River cruise, Vietnam, Cambodia, stop in for a couple nights in Siem Reap and then continue on to Thailand. And they're not really taking advantage of Cambodia and, and seeing really what it has to see and experiencing the like deepness of the history and seeing the still, the leftover social feelings of the Khmer Rouge. And so, I think that this trip is really unique. No one really goes to Cambodia for two weeks and no one gets to go to Cambodia for two. And, and if you don't go now, you're not gonna get to see it. And so, I think it's really fantastic.
It's not very difficult to convince other Brookline High School students that this is a great opportunity, just because it is a great opportunity. We have all put photos of our trip on, on, on the internet, on Facebook, and you know, like, you know, the reaction is just so, you know, people come up to me all the time. They ask me, about people I don't know, come up to me all the time at Brookline High School and ask me questions about Cambodia and like, when is the application coming out? Like, there is so much enthusiasm around it. So, I don't think it's very difficult to convince Brookline High School students that this is awesome. So, yeah, I mean, it's just such a great experience. And because Cambodia is developing so quickly, it is not a stagnant country. It is, like, there are enormous malls next to small markets and like, it's just such, this is an opportunity also, that I never would have thought to provide for myself outside of school. I mean, I would never have thought to do this if it weren't for Brookline High School. I would never have been able to provide it for myself if it weren't for Brookline High School. So, just, it's just such a phenomenal experience. And I think Brookline High School students are recognizing that and already asking when the application for next year is.
Okay. Yeah, oh, sorry. Ms. Dickoff, didn't see you.
Thank you. Just very quickly, congratulations on going. When Dan and Kate first brought this, it was a piece of paper and it was in black and white, and it wasn't nearly as exciting as, as you up on screen in, in full color. But I do remember at the time, so about fifte, quick story, about fifteen years ago, I went with two girlfriends and spent time in Cambodia. We were backpacking around. It was a very low budget and we didn't look nearly as clean as you all looked, because we, it was, anyway, let's skip past that. Moving right along. So, but, but I will say that there, there weren't big malls fifteen years ago, and to the extent that there were, we somehow didn't see them. But certainly, the beauty of the country and there are many friendly people, although in addition to friendly people, there's also a very complex history, living side by side. So, it's just wonderful that in a short period of time, you all managed to tease out that nuance and see so much and so many different interactions in a short period of time. And so, what's great is that it seems that the travel bug has bitten you, which is great. And there are, just, just in case you worry that there aren't low-budget ways to travel, there are. Plane tickets are expensive, but you can actually get around in countries for fairly little money. So, anyway, I hope for the rest of your lives, you end up exploring and that same spirit of adventure, going to many, many more countries. So, congratulations on, on starting that or continuing it.
Bravo. Thank you for sharing all that with us. Appreciate it very much. Mr. Green, did, did you want to talk at all about the trip coming up, or is, okay?
So, I was just hoping to quickly seek permission to begin advertising the trip for, for next year. We weren't sure in the beginning, before the kids came, if we were gonna ask to do another trip next year or wait a year. And then, when they came back and, and students immediately were coming to the social studies office and asking, when's the application coming out? And started hearing the stories from them, we felt that we really, there really was a lot of demand for, for a third trip. And so, looking back at our experience over the last two years, as you can tell, we did a really great job with, with a lot of help picking an incredible cohort of students. But it's been a little bit of a rushed process, where once we have approval from the, the school committee, it's usually at the end of May and June that we kind of rush to put together a group. And with the goal of having the group selected before the summer, so that students could begin doing readings and watching movies and, and begin bonding. And as you can tell, they're, they've bonded quite a bit. But we were thinking if we could begin even earlier, the process of selection of chaperones and students, we'd be able to introduce even more curriculum and have them conduct more activities, go to Lowell, get some Cambodian food before going to Cambodia, and, and really build this up more. So, so what we're hoping to ask for is not permission for the trip, but just permission to start our process and, and mention to the potential chaperones and students that we'd still be seeking formal approval from the school committee and that it wasn't, wasn't a given that this was going to happen.
Anyone wish to speak to that? Is there, is there any budget? Since we're looking at a budget tonight, are there any budget implications for that, Mr. Green, that we should know about?
There wouldn't be for, for you. We've been doing fundraising for, for this the last couple of years. And so, most of our money for the trip comes from a fundraiser that we do at the Elephant Walk, through which we raise, well, the first year we did it, we raised about three thousand dollars. And this past year, we raised eleven thousand dollars. The kids were, I have to say that the kids did it. They were, they were in charge of the fundraiser. They made it happen. They brought the speakers and it was just, just an overwhelming success. And so, we actually have quite a bit of money already that we can, will have in place to give for scholarships for students for next year, which I'm really excited about. So, it's, so I think we'll be in really good shape for that.
Dr. Lupini?
Dan, I'd like to understand the difference between asking for this permission and asking for permit. How, how do you differentiate between the two?
Well, I think the way I understand it is, so, I think that the formal permission is, is the trip going to, going to happen. And Betsy, Betsy Fitzpatrick helps us to put together the application and brings it to the, the school committee. And I think what I'm asking for is to kind of just begin our process of, of selecting chaperones and students, but it not being a given that the trip is going to happen, because I recognize it'll take a little time for, for Betsy to put together that application and present it to you in, in a month or so. So, I guess for now, it's can we begin our process of thinking about the trip, so we can have some time to prepare the, the chaperones and the kids. And then, the second one, which maybe would be at the end of May, would be the actual school committee okaying the trip.
In the foundation world, this is called inviting a proposal. It's a sort of an early, gee, this looks interesting, and why don't you, why don't you submit a proposal? The kids are already asking for the applications. It seems pretty clear that not a lot of, of advance effort needs to go into actually getting the word out. It's just a question of the administration of putting things together.
I can also say that the, the trip will be almost exactly the same. There might be minor tweaks to it, but the proposal that, that Betsy puts together and brings to you in May or early June will be exactly what you've seen for the most part in the past, the past couple of years.
Ms. Chalubski?
If you could just remind me, how much did the trip cost this year?
This year is about thirty-four hundred dollars.
Per person?
Per person.
And you expected it would be the same for next year, or?
I hope so. So, it's just been interesting that as the country is doing better, the prices are going up. So, it's, it's kind of going back to Anna's comment of, you know, being excited about seeing it right now. And so, I think it will probably be a little higher. I think it'll be a little bit over thirty-five hundred, I'm guessing. But yeah, I think even in the New York Times, there's a, this, a big article about workers from China and jobs moving now to Cambodia. And I think like the, as people are doing better there and the middle class is rising, the prices will, will continue to go up. And, and that makes me also excited about doing this the next year and the year after, because I, I think that it will increase in price in terms of the, the hotels especially and the food. But I anticipate for next year, around the same price, maybe a little, slightly higher.
Just one other question. How many students would you think to take this year?
I think, I think six is the number. And the reason six is that I think we could do more and I wish, wish we could do more. But for the second part of the trip, where we visit Prayavahar Province, which is in such a rural area, it's a little bit hard to take a lot of, a lot of kids, and especially with the accommodations there. At some point, maybe we decide to do a trip where we for, we forego that piece, although I asked the kids and they said that that was such an important part of their experience that, that they think that that's something that really needs to continue to be there. So, for now, I think six, six kids, two chaperones is probably a good, a good number.
No, so I, I, I just wanted to understand the difference. I, I quite frankly think it sounds like we're gonna do this trip. Quite frankly, people get chaperones interested in a trip before they have to submit the formal application. Anyhow, I, I would just prefer that we see the application earlier in May, rather than in June, if it sounds like this is gonna, if this is gonna happen. I, I think those, I think you're taking steps that you'd need to take to put a, put an application in. You know, if we could get that in in, in early May through Dr. Fisher-Mueller's office, all the better.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna support that. I mean, it sounds like, because you've now done it twice, it sounds like the, the proposal itself could probably just come to us earlier, which would, which would complicate our lives administratively less, just because we are essentially saying, sure, you've got approval for the trip, but you don't have approval for the trip because you haven't gone through the paperwork. So, that, that's a little bit strange. So, if we could just, I mean, if it's possible, just to move it all up, I think that would, that would be easier.
So, just to make sure I understand, so, don't, don't do anything yet, but just work with Betsy as soon as possible to get that application to you as soon as...
Well, depends on, depends on, in my mind, on what anything means, when you say, don't do anything yet. What does anything mean? Because I think there are things that you need to do. I think you need, you need to start securing chaperones. I think you need to start talking, you need to keep talking with kids who've expressed an interest. I, I would just be interested in seeing that application at our first meeting in May.
Great. That sounds, that sounds good. And we should be able to, to do that, for sure.
And at the present time, do you need to explain to people that the committee has not approved the trip yet, or is that not something that you need to tell them?
I, I was gonna ask you that.
It's a very good question.
Yeah, so I think, I think, you know, ideally, we, you know, after the vacation in April, put out a call to chaperones and, and I'd probably ask your opinion about, just ask something you'd want us to mention.
I mean, what, what I would say is, is what we say to, to people who've put trips in that have been, that are approved year after year. We've done this trip twice. It's been successful. We presented to the school committee. We've been asked to put a proposal together. We have every reason to believe it'll go forward, and we're gonna ask for that formal permission in early May.
Great. That sounds good. I gotta, should have written that down as you were saying it.
It's on TV.
Right. That's right. Great. No, that sound, that sounds good.
Okay. Any, any other comments? All right, thanks. Thank you so much.
Great. Thanks so much. We appreciate it.
And thank you so much, ladies, for enlightening us. We're jealous. We have subcommittee reports. Ms. Kershaw? What would you like to share with us, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna defer my subcommittee update to the agenda item on the FY14 budget.
Seems to make sense to me. Ms. Chalubski?
Yes. I'm gonna start out with a vote that we're gonna ask the school committee to take. I think all of you received, well, I think I might wait a second, so we can hear each other. I think all of you received the information on the donation of a sculpture to the Lawrence School by Mac Duert, who was a teacher at the, he, he was a teacher at one of the schools. I, now, which school was he at? He was our teacher at the Driscoll School. Thank you. And I, I think everybody got a picture in the, yes. Well, he was a teacher in the Brooklyn, in both places. Thank you. Okay. We met, the capital subcommittee met last week, or just a couple days ago, Tuesday, and discussed this. Mr. Rogers is very enthusiastic about it and has, they've looked at a place in front of the school to place it with some appropriate green backing around it to make it stand out more and, and also cover up some of the unsightly air conditioning units there. So, I guess I'd like to put the proposal on the table and to vote to accept the donation of the sculpture for the Lawrence School, and then we can have some discussion on it.
Okay, so you've made a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Very good. Thank you, Mascado. So, now you want to discuss it?
Does anybody have any questions or anything about it? I just would add that one of the things we discussed at the capital subcommittee was that Rick Rogers has been over the site with Aaron Schute-Gallantine. They've looked at, they've looked at it as a green space and in, in terms of where the best placement was. And, and it's also the installation is cost-free to the, to the district.
Was there anything else?
I thought you were gonna say, I just wondered where it's gonna be located.
Oh, at the Lawrence School. I'm sorry. So, you know where the, if you, you're looking at the Lawrence School, the front entrance to the left where the principal's office is, there's a set of three windows. It would be centered on those three windows with the air conditioning units behind them. Well, it won't block the air conditioning units. It'll be centered between them, actually, and then that's why the greens, shrubbery would be an important aspect to it.
Several of us saw the artist last night at the Lawrence School, at the modular presentation.
Oh, that's right. That's correct.
And I hope I wasn't premature. I, I thanked him profusely for, for...
We'll find out in a minute.
Right.
His sculptures are actually in many different places. He did the, the opening gate to which...
Oh, Driscoll School.
The pla, no, no, oh, yes, but also there's a playground...
In Vermont, I think.
No, 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 in, in Brookline, right down by Clearflower, yeah. With a huge, a huge gate that, that Mac did also.
He said he's made a donation of a sculpture to each school in which he's taught, to me, last night.
Okay. Oh, so I guess he taught at the Lawrence School, or his children at least went there.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, we have a motion and a second, and the discussion has been had. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
You're welcome. I just wanted to make sure it was clear, nobody was opposed. And, and we'll certainly send him a letter of gratitude for the donation, et cetera. Okay, so, going on, and I just lost my stuff here. We had a meeting on Tuesday of the capital subcommittee, at which we spoke. I'm sorry? The building commission was on Tuesday, right. Okay, let me start with that. Went through the different schools. Ronkel has a few little outstanding items, but they are certified a mass, a green, they are certified as a green building, equal to a lead silver, in terms of getting all the mass chips points that we needed to get. So, that's, that's a very good thing. The Heath School, Barbara, do you wanna say something about that?
Yes. The Heath School is in very good shape. All of the interior carpentry has been done. And the current work that's still underway is work with the landscaping. There's some improvement needed there. There's some drainage issues, but they're working on that with the Park Department.
Thank you. The Unified Arts Building is... The Unified Arts Building is moving along in terms of the roof and the masonry repointing and replacing or or rebuilding of the chimneys at the Unified Arts. That's supposed to happen this summer, and everybody's aware that this is going to be a very interesting sort of dance between the students who need to be there and the building contractors that need to to work around them. And my understanding is they would be beginning in July and finishing by December. They will be replacing a slate roof with a slate roof. The Preservation Commission has sort of weighed in on that. And that's about it about the Unified Arts. Are there any questions about that, or? The other piece that they talked about, and actually that was in the signatures here for the school committee, was about the modulators, in terms of signing the contract for the remainder of the amount for the architect. We, what we did, we, this this contract was divided into two pieces. The first part's sort of the feasibility stage of the contract to see, could we even do any modulators? And with the end result of the presentation that we had last night at Lawrence. And the second part is for the actual design and construction administration. So that was what you signed here tonight. There was also the Lawrence School meeting last night, which I think went quite well. Tony Giggly ran the meeting. He's going to be the project manager of the modulators. And the architect Jorge Cruz from Plansburgh came and presented pictures. Ms. Stone and Ms. Scott are with her, and maybe you wanna say something, since you two are the point people on this.
You can start. I do have something to say. I thought it was a, I thought it was a good conversation. It was actually not as as heavily attended as I expected it to be, given some of the the back and forth on on email from the Neighborhood Association especially, although there were a number of people there who had been commenting about their nervousness about the project. But I thought that both the parents who spoke and the and the folks in the neighborhood were raising very good issues, in particular, raising the issue of the the safety and ease of use of Newell Road, both for cars and for pedestrians. I thought a number of those points were very important. I was very glad the architect heard them, and I was very pleased that we were able to offer the community the opportunity of a small building committee, such as the one we've been working with at Pierce for the auditorium, for example, that the principal would put together so that both parents and and community members, particularly Newell Road members, who will be most significantly affected, can be involved as the plans move forward.
Ms. Scott?
Yeah, I'd like to just mention a few procedural things, because I think it's important that people know how long this is going to take. Right now, we are about to hire an architect for the building and construction plans, and that will take a while to to get done. But there are also zoning issues that have to be addressed. Some of the zoning is about the parking, the FAR, the floor area ratio of the whole school with this addition will slightly exceed the allowable limit, so there'll have to be special permits. And then there are the transportation issues that Rebecca mentioned. The zoning issues, the architect estimated after the building and construction plans will take around, he said, ninety days. We can, that doesn't mean we can't start doing work, but you do it at your own risk. If you don't get the special permit and you've started, then you might have to undo some things you've done. Probably not likely in this case, but it is something to be aware of. They said they would probably start construction of the modulators in the fall, and he thought it would take four to five months for preparation and construction. So there have been various dates when this all might be ready. We're hoping for December. Whether that will happen, I guess, is anybody's guess.
Well, let me just add a couple of things. First of all, that the Rick Rogers, the principal, did say that he had could make provision on a temporary basis until the modulators were done to to house all students properly. Wouldn't be the prettiest thing in the world, but he would get it done, number one. And number two, my impression was also very favorable of the meeting, and there were really no material objections to the modular idea at all. It was all, as as Ms. Stone said, it was all about the safety of and the traffic on on Newell Road. And I I thought Dr. Lupini did a nice job in in responding to that and making a an analogy to what we do on Beverly Road for Baker.
Yeah, thanks.
My pleasure.
And, you know, obviously, this discussion will be continuing. We will be getting some more drawings from the architectural firm that Mascado and Ms. Stone will be involved with, and more to, more to come, basically. The other piece from the Building Commission was the Pierce School Auditorium, and I'm not sure if you're aware, if you want me to update that there was the preconstruction meeting?
Right. As I understood it, there was a preconstruction meeting, and we are still on on schedule for the work that needed to get completed in the summer, that it will involve some disruption of school streets and closing off of School Street because of the trucks that are needed to put the new HVAC units on the roof, but that but that we were on schedule.
Right.
And so looking towards the project starting as we anticipated it to be.
At the end, as soon as school ends, and hopefully completion by October 1st, if everything goes well. There will be some disruption to traffic on School Street during the construction, probably during the summer.
It can only be during, that that was the whole point.
Right.
Is that that part had to happen during the summer.
Correct, exactly. And it's, the name of the contractor is Network Construction, which I also think there is, there was a contract in here for them, or a first payment even. The last piece that they discussed at the Building Commission had to do with BHS concept study, and that will, that conversation will continue at the Capitol Subcommittee on April 26th at 11 o'clock, I am pretty sure. We also at the last, at the April 9th Capitol Subcommittee, discussed the magic that Charlie does with classrooms and spaces and and carving out area out of space that you wouldn't think could be carved up anymore. But he's, he continues to do it and do it very well, thankfully. So we, yes?
One thing that occurred to me is we have the, is the ongoing conversations with the public about the B-Space, is that although we get this wonderful presentation by Charlie and have for the last many years, at our first meeting or second meeting in the fall of what he and his elves have accomplished over the, over the summer, I was thinking that for the purposes of explaining to the public what actually has been done, the question comes up over and over and over again. What have you done? You know, this this seems like we're looking at a big solution and what has been done, and and if there was some way to capture the the totality of those presentations that that Charlie has done for us, and to put them into one, he has a PowerPoint for us every year, so I, maybe those PowerPoints could be combined somehow to just show the extent of the transformations that have been done in all of the schools over the last several years, and the number of classrooms that were created, and and out of what spaces they were created. I think that would just be very helpful for the public to have access to that information.
So you would like to have that done at B-Space, or or you'd like to have it on the on the web?
I was just wondering. I I don't wanna ask Charlie to do any more work than he already does.
Yeah, see, that's the one thing that I worry about with something like this.
Right.
This is a lot of work to get together.
It's just a question of whether or not those, he has those in simple files that could be turned over, and we could simply post them essentially.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Well, why don't, why don't we talk about it? Charlie will be at the next Capitol Subcommittee meeting.
We'll ask Charlie. Maybe it's as simple as he has the presentations, and we can put them up in a file.
Exactly.
Exactly. That's great.
Just one other suggestion, this is literally to, and then this is not a long thing, but a bullet point list of, here are the spaces we have actually converted. So it's almost just a a one-page document that says, here's all the.
Go on beyond one page.
Whatever it is. But I guess I'm not, I'm not saying a new presentation, but literally just here is the number of classrooms we've created, the number of.
Since when?
Pick ones are, 2006 is our new watermark now. We're saying thirty percent since 2006.
Because I think there was stuff done at Devotion to cut up classrooms and to.
Look, I don't wanna micromanage this. All I'm saying is that people might not go through nine years' worth of PowerPoint presentations. And so if there were a one-page document that said, here is the totality in summary.
We'll talk to Charlie about what he has.
Okay.
Right.
And there is some small, minor masonry work that's gonna be going out for Baker and Driscoll. There's a study being done on on the masonry. So that basically, the Building Commission is keeping up with maintaining our buildings, and they do these updates of of the different aspects of the building. That's all I have, unless somebody else on the, oh, devotion! Oh, my God! How could I forget devotion? I'm so sorry. Would you like to present, or do you want me to?
So Tony Giggly was, met with the MSBA this week and is our owner's project manager for the Devotion renovation project, and we are hoping to schedule a meeting of the committee, the Devotion renovation committee.
Soon after vacation.
Soon after vacation.
Very good. Thank you very much, Ms. Shalovsky. Ms. Scott, curriculum?
Yes, the Curriculum Committee met on April 2nd, and we had two excellent presentations about literacy. The first one was about the Content Reading Initiative at the high school. Jenny Ramos came and told us about what was happening there. They have three content teams, English, Social Studies, and World Language, and these teams, which consist of six teachers each, are working collaboratively collaboratively with one another, and is really changing their teaching based on the sharing of what they're doing, trying out all kinds of new ideas. Jenny gave us, for example, the U.S. Weekly Top Ten More Things You May Not Know About CRI Content Reading Initiative. And number one says this, "A guiding belief of Content Reading Initiative is our understanding of how to teach literacy improves greatly when we closely examine our teaching practices with colleague, with our colleagues." Now, the truth of the matter is, teaching improves greatly when you share and you interact with colleagues and develop reading practices. But then she goes on to list things that are doing. One teacher is having kids keep personal word journals when they encounter a word they don't know. They write it down, then they come together and discuss them. Another teacher is deliberately introducing academic vocabulary words like evaluate, analyze, compare, contrast. Now, this is high school, and you assume they understand those words already. But they, in class, they're doing much more in-depth discussions of what that means. One teacher is teaching himself 100 Chinese vocabulary words because he wanted the challenge of what it meant to his students when they had to learn vocabulary that was totally unfamiliar with them. The purpose is to enhance the literacy skills of all of the students at Brookline High. It's very exciting. I think we are going to hear more about this, and I think that the, this is going to overflow, and new teams will be started in areas like math and science and areas that you don't usually associate with literacy, but in fact, literacy is deeply embedded in all of those subjects. So it was a very exciting presentation. And Jenny said there's really a cultural shift going on, that it is radically changing the ways they teach. But they need time at this point to synthesize some of the data. They're speaking at a couple of conferences, speaking at the Mass Reading Association Conference, speaking at the LRA in Texas, I can't remember what that stands for. But it's a very exciting initiative at the high school. After that, Patricia Consella came. Patricia Consella is the Curriculum Coordinator K-8 for Literacy. And first of all, she showed us some of the assessments for the Level Literacy Intervention and how much students have gone up with this kind of approach. Level Literacy Intervention means that you go right in with small groups of students when you realize in the very early grades that they're struggling with reading. And children are making amazing progress with that. This will be moving to grades three to five, and basically, in three to five, there will be literacy coaches trained, and but the but the way language arts is taught, literacy is taught, will remain pretty much the same. The assumptions about literature will remain the same. There'll be independent reading and writing time, long literature blocks, reader and writer workshops. Good things, good things going on there. It was, a lot of discussion ensued about the kinds of books that you could use at various grade levels with different levels of readers, and it was interesting because Patricia Consella said, it's very difficult to come up with a list of books, even at one level, because every reader is the same, and the book that will meet the needs of one reader will not meet the needs of another reader. And the thing that I appreciated most is, she said, really, at the heart of literacy is the interaction between the student and the teacher when there is a discussion going on in that that question, where the teacher is just pushing the student to think more deeply. But the student may then come back with a response that pushes the teacher a bit to think more deeply. So there's some very exciting things going on in literacy, and I hope you see some of this reflected in your kids when they come home from school.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Ms. Stone, government relations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of you may have seen the news today that there seems to be, seems to have been a break in the deadlock over gun control, at least background check legislation. We've gotten farther and farther away from the comprehensive legislation that we were all hoping for. The the Acton, Acton, Boxborough, Somerville, Arlington, Westboro, and Worcester School Committees have all joined together in an effort to send letters to representatives in Washington and also at the state level, saying that as as guardians of our public schools, we believe it imperative that that there be both national and state level action on gun safety. And so the proposal before you tonight, recommended certainly by me, is to, is to have the Brookline School Committee join with our other school committees in sending a letter of that sort, based on the letter that I circulated to you that was started by Acton and Acton, Boxborough, essentially saying that while we may, we may not be of the same party or of the same set of religious beliefs, and we may firmly support both gun ownership and the Second Amendment, as as individuals that, as a committee, we find the absence of conference of gun control and gun safety legislation absolutely unacceptable at this point in light of all of the shootings. And that's what the the thrust of the letter would be. We'd prepare it for Mr. Morse's signature on our behalf, and I recommend the committee put that out as soon as possible.
Ms. Shalovsky?
I second.
Very good discussion. Ms. Shalovsky?
Will it only go to our delegation?
It will go to the, each of the committees is writing to their particular representatives, so ours would go to Senator Warren, Senator Cowan, Representative Kennedy, State Senator Cream, and Representative Smysik Sanchez, Moran and Coppinger.
I'm just wondering, 'cause I gave you the paper today, all of them voted yes for the legislation, at least in the Congress, and.
If I read that correctly, I don't know if anybody else saw it in the paper, there was, you know, how does Massachusetts...
Oh, oh.
...in the Northeast. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't send it to more members of Congress?
We could certainly, we could certainly copy it to every member of Congress. It's no reason why not.
With the email?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Cato.
It would seem to me that another thing we could do is send the letter signed by all of the school committees to the leadership in Congress so that it would have some weight if 25 or 30 school committees signed a letter that went to...
Harry Reid.
Harry Reid, perfect example.
I believe, given the timing of the legislation, that what they are trying to do is get school committees to act and not to try to spend the time collecting signatures and okay's. So this has been going out on the MASC listserv as we will put online that we have joined. And there is a certain sense of a snowball effect here as this is rolling downhill. I hope that will inspire other school committees to do the same. But taking the time, given the, given the timing of the legislation itself, it's hard to put something like that together.
I think we should go ahead and do our part. The possibility might be to ask MASC to coordinate a...
I think they are, I mean, I don't know. I think they are tracking. They've certainly been helpful in giving us information on how many other...
Yeah, that's how we found out about it.
Yeah, so they may be doing that already. We could certainly ask.
Seeing no other discussion, do we need a motion and a vote, Ms. Stone?
A motion and a second.
We have. Sorry, how quickly one forgets. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. All those opposed? There aren't any, Ms. Chalovsky. Thank you very much, Ms. Stone.
And thank you all.
And Dr. Warren, we're at negotiations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The negotiations subcommittee has nothing to report.
Very good. Thank you for being so succinct. Policy review, Ms. Stone.
I, the, due to the overwhelming demands on every school committee member over the last several weeks, we have postponed discussion of the policies under review until our May meeting, which I believe is May 14th or 15th. Is that on the schedule? May 15th. So we will be taking up the policies that I talked about last time when we have had a chance to do the work on them that they deserve. So the meeting previously scheduled for the 24th has been canceled.
Thank you for the respite. Any additional liaison, please? Dr. Warren.
Just briefly, yesterday, the Brookline Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee met and learned that the enrollments for the current year in the fall of 2012, winter semester 2013, those enrollments, they call them seats, actually went up modestly from the prior year. So, and the spring enrollments are about 100 down what they, from last year, but there's still a substantial amount of time yet to run, so they expect another couple hundred. So it could indicate that there's a bit more, increasing participation in the program. So that seems good. And then we spent some time discussing what are acceptable criteria to use for presentation and lectures in terms of balancing First Amendment rights versus what the community might find both interesting and/or acceptable. No conclusions were reached, but I think it's a, potentially, an interesting topic for the, for the committee to, not this committee, but for the Adult and Community Education Committee to continue to consider.
Great.
That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Other, yes, Ms. Kershaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Special Education Parent Advisory Committee had its monthly meeting on April 5th, and at the request of those chairs and the indulgence of the administration, Mr. Rowe came and presented to them a really a background history and overview of special education funding, state cost drivers, budget structures at the local level. The presentation was really intended to help the special education parents and committee sort of understand the broader issues with which they are doing their advocacy and work. And I want to thank Mr. Rowe for a terrific presentation. We had great turnout from many parents who belong to CPAC. And I think they found the presentation sort of universally helpful and really broadened their perspective on sort of the various pressures and driving forces behind special education funding and requirements. And so I think it was very well received. It had a lot of positive feedback. And thank you, Mr. Rowe, for allowing that to happen. And I had a lot of nice comments from the, from the chairs afterwards to say that the committee members were very pleased, and that it was a positive step for them.
Well done. Yes, Ms. Stone.
I always forget that we haven't met since things happened. It seems like it's happened a long time ago. But the Steps to Success annual event was a, was a great success and a lot of fun up at Jerry Remy's. And I understand, only because although we haven't, the board hasn't met, and so we haven't actually gotten a report on, on the fundraising, I understand from listening to Pooja Mateo, who's one of the candidates for, I believe, Library Trustee, last night, reported that, that they had, that they had taken in three times as much this year as in the past because of some changes they made in how they, how they solicited, using credit cards and things like that. So it sounds like, it sounds like both, both turnout and, and the efficiency of the operation has redounded to the, to the benefit of the organization, which is terrific.
Congratulations to the board and the board chair.
All of the, all of the kids who talked there were really, as usual, really, really fabulous, wonderful to hear their stories.
Very good. No, Ms. Ditko, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you going to do an update on this workshop or, but on the strategic plan piece or only, or all of it?
You're welcome to, why don't we do it together?
All right, so do yours and then I'll chime in.
Okay.
Then I'll just say, I'll just say one quick thing, which is, the Strategic Plan Committee has continued apace. As you'll recall, in our last session or session before, we had presentations from Stieg Leschley and Vanessa Kirsch. If you remember our first presentation, a couple days after Chris Avery spoke, he was prominently featured in the New York Times. And I just want to say that we continue to bat a thousand because, because Stieg's organization was featured on the front page of EdWeeks two days after he spoke to us. And Vanessa was named one of the top 25 most influential Bostonians in philanthropy by Boston Magazine several days after she spoke with us. So I think we should pitch this as part of our, as part of, one of the benefits of coming to the Brookline School Committee is that shortly thereafter, you will, you will gain further attention, notoriety. I was going for attention, but okay, notoriety.
Like a fortune cookie.
The good thing is, if you know, if you pick, if you pick the right people, they will, they will do great things. Anyway, and then the, the last thing I would say is that we have finished our parent forums at this stage, although, so we've done three, two at Town Hall and one in South Brookline. They were facilitated by an outside facilitator, and people gave us lots of feedback on the goals. The one thing that we still want to do is a more, I guess, sort of invited-focused group of parents, just to make sure that we're hearing from voices that we don't necessarily always hear from people who come to parent forums. So that's, that's still underway. And then there was a rich discussion at the workshop, which I will defer to, to the chairman's section. So more to come.
Thank you. I'll just add that we had a lively public hearing for the, the first one, for B-Space, and it was well-attended with a lot of really interesting comments and questions and some substantial interaction between the, between the audience and the committee, which I thought worked quite well. And, and then it was reviewed in detail, all, kind of, as it was going on, it turned out by one of the people responsible for the public discussion, public B-Space discussion, who described it as it was happening, which I didn't find out until later. But I thought it was a successful hearing. I don't know whether anybody else who was there would like to comment on it.
For those of you who don't understand what Mr. Morse was just referring to, Joe Rant was live blogging the public hearing on the Facebook page that, that he and a small group of parents had set up. So, which it would have, it was very difficult to know about that at the time, since we were not, in fact, on Facebook at the time in Town Hall. But, but yeah, I agree, I agree that it, that it went very well. We heard a few, as is, as we have all come to expect from the town of Brookline, residents of the town of Brookline, we heard, we heard some ideas and certainly a lot of passion for the, for the public schools and the system that people send their kids to. And we also heard some really creative, outside-the-box thinking, not just about the structure of the schools, but really about the town and the nature of the conversation and how to think about, how to think about these broader conversations about resources and revenues. And it's never just about the schools, it's also about development, and it's also about the economic base and how those things are changing. So it was really, as I said, as usual, when you, when you ask the public to come comment, you get far more than, than one might normally expect. It's really, it's a great, it's a great place.
Correct. Dr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just was struck by the, the, there wasn't much in the way of complaining about, there was, it was quite a nice tone, I thought, although there was some skepticism expressed by a couple of speakers about the validity of the population arguments. And there was one individual, I don't know his name, who was questioning how long the committee has been involved in looking into these matters. But I thought that by and large, this may be a mischaracterization, but I think that it was a general recognition that we're all in the same boat and that we have to figure out how to get ourselves out of this situation as best we can.
Ms. Kershaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wondered, I was there for part of it, but not the whole thing. I wondered if, if you as members of the committee or someone on the committee is sort of highlighting common themes and also what you're going to do with the information from the public hearing.
We're certainly going to discuss it at the upcoming meeting on the 29th of April.
There are also a number of members of the B-Space Committee who have already been circulating their own takes on how to pull together, exactly what you were saying, how to pull together some of this. We now have several different places where we're getting a variety of ideas from groups of people, groups of the public. And I think everybody is eager to have some kind of digest of that. So as you suggest, and it may be that the, the folks who are running the Facebook page may want to do that. They, they did hand us the results of their, their...
Survey.
...survey that they did, which Mark Foster was very good about saying...
He was.
...about stating upfront all the limitations of the, of the feedback, but, but it's, nonetheless, it is, it is feedback. And, and so some of that was, was one way to frame it. And then there are other conversations that certainly from the, from the committee, from that hearing itself, it's hard to gauge, of course, who comes, you know, who comes to a hearing and, but we, we will try to get a sense of where the, B-Space will certainly be going off of its sense of where the commentary has been, has been going.
Yeah, just a clarification. I mean, since the two public hearings are kind of the sum total of the engagement on the public of this, I, I guess I wondered what the formal intention of B-Space was relative to the information that was collected. I mean, beyond just, you know, reflecting on it and discussing it. It seems like if, if that's it, then there should be some level of formal write-up, recognition, and probably recognition of the fact that it's a narrow slice of the population that might attend those hearings as well.
Well, actually, let me just comment on that for a minute. There is this robust public, Facebook public discussion, which is providing a huge...
But that's, but the, the Facebook discussion is most, is a, is a discussion among a relatively small group of people seen by a relatively large group of people, but almost exclusively, almost exclusively, certainly not exclusively, school parents. And as we've said over and over again, the, the whole point of the B-Space Committee was to take the conversation about the schools outside of just the schools because of the importance of the structure of the schools and the schools themselves to the life and vibrancy of, of Brookline as a town. And so the only thing about what you just said, Amy, is that, is that the two public hearings are somehow the only way we're interacting with the public. They are absolutely not the only way we're interacting with the public. They are two public hearings to respond to things that we've put out, to get specific responses. And the second public hearing will be about more specific recommendations that are starting to be developed by the committee. But everything we have done since we started, including all of the information that we've put out publicly, all of the FAQs we have been asking over and over again, including of the PTOs and the site councils, please to, to bring us ideas, to write to us, to call us. We've been doing that with the listservs, the Neighborhood Association, putting things out on the TMMA. The engagement with the public is not subsumed into public hearings. And I think that's, that's the only mischaracterization I think you met, I mean, you made that, that it's, one of the reasons we created B-Space as a, as a public body was so that all of its meetings would be open. It does constrain us by putting, making us subject to the open meeting law, which means that deliberations that can happen freely among the public cannot happen freely among the members of the B-Space Committee. But that doesn't mean that the, the public conversation isn't happening and isn't being actively solicited. It is.
I, I feel like I just have to say, because we didn't get to talk about this at the workshop, that I really think there is a big distinction between informing the public and letting them react to your ideas and engaging. So when we say we've taken this discussion outside the schools, I think, yes, the school committee for at least as long as I've been on, and I understand for much longer than that, has been talking about the population issue. But that doesn't mean we've been out in the school community, understanding what the sacrifices are they're willing to make, how closely held they feel about the K-8 system, how closely held they feel about a concept or what is and isn't happening. I think some of the benefit of the incredibly difficult budget discussions we've had has been the engagement with the public, who actually really cares and wants to engage with us about this, especially when there's something that affects them so deeply. And so for me, the public engagement processes I've, I've been involved with, and indeed the consultants who did the demographic study for us and, and shared information about Virginia or Maryland or wherever the other community was, partly what that consultant did for them was start in the community, not with a group of, not with a 10-member group of officials with a slice of, of experience in the public schools. But they went out to the community, they gathered information, they used that information to help form what would then be the recommendations. And I, I, I just feel that there, there has been a missing piece of this. And I know I've expressed it to you, Mr. Chairman, and, and to you, Ms. Stone, and I just feel like I wanted to share with the rest of my colleagues that, because part of what I heard on Monday also was... I heard on Monday also was some level of frustration in the opportunity to really not hear what B-Space is thinking or read documents with links on it, but engage in a discussion about a set of values, about our community, on a decision that will have a very long-term, profound impact on the landscape of education in Brookline. And to have so much of the school community not able to engage in that, so we have a Facebook site that now has 300 members or whatever it is, but they're self-selected.
That's true.
And so I feel very much like, you know, and I put us in this category too, that a very important, long-term decision about what's going to happen in the schools, which is now under this incredibly difficult time pressure, is going to be made by those of us with a very narrow slice of experience in the schools. I'm not sure what process we're using to talk to the teachers about it, so I just feel like I had to express that to you. I know you don't share my opinion on those things, but I felt like I needed to talk a little bit about my concern, which doesn't have to do with my having wished to have served on that committee.
Do you want to make some suggestions now or later?
Well, I guess that's a little bit of why I was asking about what's going to happen with the public feedback and where we go with it. I mean, I think if the sum total of our engagement with the public is around the public hearings, I mean, maybe we ourselves should do a survey. Or we should, I mean, if we could go back in time, you know, the committee started meeting in January, we had a whole series of forums where Dr. Lupini was out at the schools, half could have been budget, half could have been B-Space.
They were. I'm sorry, I have to jump in here. So I have to go back at least seven years before I can find a forum that didn't start around space issues. At least seven years. Every forum that I've done, and I've done one in every school every year and with almost every major program every year, has been largely about our space issues. And we've had ongoing discussions in those. And by the way, there have been school committee members at each and every one of them, at every one of them. There have been those discussions. By the way, with many of those people who stood at the podium the other night and said those things, they've been engaged in those conversations for seven and eight years about those
About the growth in enrollment.
About the growth in enrollment, about what our options might be to do something short-term and possibly long-term about those things. Those things have been going on for six and seven years. So when I hear that just started, you know, I wonder where I've been, quite frankly, because those conversations have been going on at each and every school. And there are people around this table who've been involved as PTO members who know that.
Sorry, I had to clarify. I don't think we just started these conversations. I think we've been talking for a long time without a broad community process about the problem of enrollment.
Well, I think that's why we commissioned that master plan that you taught, I mean, this committee commissioned that master plan five or six years ago and asked that group to engage in that conversation. So I think that conversation was going on then and it was created by this committee.
So I would just ask then, my recommendation is that the B-Space Committee seriously consider the feedback you received about the lack of public process. And I hear you loud and clear that the representatives from the school committee and the superintendent believe there has been sufficient public engagement.
I didn't say sufficient. I don't know what that word means. That's in the eyes of the beholder. I don't know what it means. I think to say it hasn't happened is a misrepresentation.
I think to say that we've been talking about enrollment challenges for a long time is really different than saying, we're going to build, here are the three different kinds of schools we're going to build. To say we've been talking about modulators for a really long time is different than we put out a RFR for architects for at Lawrence. I just think those things are different. And I think we have to recognize that. And I can stand alone on that. That's fine.
No, Ms. Kershaw, you don't have to stand alone. What I'd like to do is to spread the conversation out a little bit, because there are some other people who wish to speak, first Ms. Mascato, and then Dr. Warren, and then Ms. Cox.
It's interesting for me to think about this conversation because I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm having conversations based on what's happening at B-Space all the time with people in the community. When I go to my book group, people ask me about it. When I meet people in the grocery store, they ask me about it. And what I think B-Space has done in general is stimulate interest and stimulate conversation in the community. And the community needs to be talking to one another as well as talking to us. And we need to be listening to the community and not just listening to people who come to the hearings, because we know who they are likely to be, we hear from them in a variety of ways, and that's wonderful. I'm not criticizing that at all. But there are a lot of people out there. When I talk to my 83-year-old neighbor and she asks me, what's happening with the schools and what are you doing about enrollment and why don't you do this? All of that informs my opinion. When we talk to one another, our ideas change, they grow, they develop. And I think we've been doing that all along. I don't think any process at this point in time is going to get exactly what is going to satisfy us to say, well, we have gotten community input. What does that mean? I mean, which community? The school community? The senior community? The community of students who live here? All of these people, if you begin to talk to them, have opinions about what we should do. What we need to be doing is thinking about and refining our ideas about this and trying to synthesize some of what we are learning. And that's what I hope that B-Space will do. And when we get to the end of the process, and please, may it come soon, though it probably won't, when we get to the end of the process, I hope everybody can look back and say, gee, this isn't where I necessarily thought we would end up, but this is really good.
Thank you, Ms. Mascato. Dr. Warren?
The MGT of America have come twice. Their second presentation, this was actually a topic that came up yesterday in the Brookline Adult Education and Continuing Community Education. As soon as we dispatched the topics of the day, we went into the reason why Peter had to leave to go to the Lawrence School to talk about the modulators, and that led to the other discussion. But I think Ms. Kershaw has a good point to make, that MGT in their consulting work, I think with Montgomery County, engaged them in a process to create an Internet-based presentation that was costly. I mean, it cost about $100,000 to do that. And I think the planning process was sufficiently advanced that they could identify what the different options were and solicit from, it was sort of like the functions that cropped up recently in the New York Times. You want to balance the budget, you balance the budget. You know, how much do you take from this, you know, from entitlements and how much do you take from the military, how much do you take from Department of Interior and Parks and that kind of thing? It really made the point to the voter in Montgomery County of where the resources would have to come from in order to facilitate the different options. I think something like that would be very useful. I think that we'd be challenged both on time, on resources to pay for such a presentation. But it would be valuable. I think that we're, you know, we're pressed on time with the number of students that are coming in, and we've got huge constraints as far as the availability of land to place these. So our options have been constrained for a time that exceeds the amount of time that we have been delving into this. So it's been a difficult process from that point of view.
Ms. Cox?
First of all, I wanted to commend the B-Space Communications Committee, I think which is led by Rebecca Stone at the communications they put out, the frequently asked questions. It's an extremely complex issue, and yes, Dr. Lupini's been talking about it for several years, and it gets increasingly complex with all the moving pieces to it. So it does take a lot just even to understand the context for the conversation. That said, I wanted to support Ms. Kershaw because that's something that I've felt as well and that I hear a lot in the community, is a real desire to be asked, to be engaged. And that we know there are ways of doing it. I think Dr. Warren may be referring to, I remember an experience of when a decision was being made about where we were going to renovate a new school, and there was the question whether it would be Runcle or Devotion or Pierce. And a group of parents was put together in the Lincoln School, Old Lincoln School Auditorium for a charrette, and it was an interactive presentation. And it was very useful in that, in the course of that survey, given more complex factors, some of us were able to change our way of thinking. And I think if we could find something like that, where people understand what, not just, you know, here are the options, but here are the costs associated with those options and have an opportunity to think those through and then give opinions, we could have a really valuable conversation and a much better decision as a result.
Ms. Stone?
I just want to associate myself and the B-Space Committee with what you just described. So one of my frustrations with the eagerness of the Facebook group to put out its survey, as I explained to them, before they did that, was that a survey is very much something that we would like to do. We're not sure we have the capacity to do it. A Facebook survey reaches only those on Facebook, and that's not the reach that we need for a survey that really goes out to the town. But we have been thinking actively about doing a survey. Once, as Ms. Cox described quite well, once we have a sense of, within each suggestion that's come up, what the constraints are, the relative advantages and constraints, what does it deliver in terms of solving the problem, what are the things we might have to give up in order to do this? And so asking people what they think about an option doesn't make any sense at a stage in the process where it's just an option on paper, unless you can say to the community, if you like this option, this is what it would give us, but this is what you would have to do to have it, and how much time it would take, and who would be affected, and all of those things. And so to allow people the luxury of being able to look at it and look at each choice in context, each option in context, you have to wait until you've got that context. And that's the work that the B-Space Committee is trying to do, is to do the timelines for each of the options and to do the costs of each of the options and to do that does it involve redistricting. And to put out, when we have that, exactly what you're suggesting. And try to figure out a way to do it that gets it out into a much bigger piece of the community than, and so it's also a question of how you feel to survey that would actually reach as many people as we would want to.
Okay. Stimulated a good discussion, Ms. Kershaw. Put us behind time, but it was very valuable. Thank you. Mr. Reed, I think you're up. Oh, no, excuse me, you're not. I forgot about public comment. I, God.
Got me all excited.
Are you here? Pardon?
Naomi. I knew she would have liked Amy.
Okay, good. Chad? You know the game.
I'll be brief. I'd like to just start by thanking Alan personally for making sure that I didn't follow immediately after the high school students talking about their Cambodia trip. After two weeks ago, I was glad to see that. So I'll be very quick. I mean, I think we've had a lot of meetings, a lot of great conversations. It does look like I and some of the other parents have not won the battle to convince you to keep ECS in the budget. I know that decision isn't final for a little bit longer, but at the same time, it's very helpful to us and very gratifying how seriously you've taken that conversation and the efforts that you've made to at least keep ECS having a chance to be saved if additional funding becomes available. I know officially there's no priority list, but I know that you've heard us in terms of what might happen if more money comes in. You know, for us, this is a long-term thing. We believe that ECS must be seen throughout Brookline as a core program. I do think that Brookline can't fully execute its education mission without ECS or something that fills that need. So I look forward to working with you in the coming years to make that happen. If we're able to save ECS in this year's budget, that would be fantastic. If not, I will continue to pester you, and I look forward to that. So thank you all very much for tonight and for all the other conversations we've had.
Well, I want to thank you for pestering us in the most civil way possible. And that means very effectively.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that very much, and I think all of us do. And by the way, whatever decision we make tonight, which we have to, is not the last decision
Absolutely.
...we're going to make on this budget, because there are a substantial number of outstanding issues about which we are just not knowledgeable yet.
Understood. And I do hope that that communication can be two ways, and that you can pester us as well, if there is anything constructive we can do to help in that conversation, whether it's with other parties in the town. I know a large number of letters at Dr. Lupini's suggestion have been sent to various state representatives about the overall state budget. So, you know, we don't just send letters to you, we can send letters and call other places, so please let us know. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Now, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. Wait, wait, wait. Naomi. And people have asked if there's anyone else. Yep. I'm sorry, Naomi, I did not know you were coming back. We had called you first, so... Once again, I withhold Mr. Reed.
I'm very much look forward to hearing what he has to say.
We allocate you up to three minutes, you know that, okay.
Yeah. Thank you very much. My name's Naomi Switzer, and I am a Pierce School parent. I have a first grader at Pierce School, and I have a two-year-old who will be entering the BEAT program at Lynch next year. And my first grader also participated in the BEAT program, and I am a member of the Pierce School Site Council. I feel like I'm getting my legs as a Brookline parent and have come to a bunch of the meetings over the last several weeks, so it's been interesting to get a view into everything that's happening beyond just reading the tab and what sometimes comes through the PTO emails. So it's been a very interesting learning curve. And I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to share some thoughts that I had around what's going on with the budget and with the space issues. My husband came to the B-Space meeting and reported back, but I didn't get to give my two cents at that meeting. So I'd like to chime in on both of those issues. I think the first thing I'd like to say is that, you know, the override discussion seems to have begun, and I'm very glad to hear it. I've been waiting for it to begin in earnest, and that I'm prepared, and I know that there are many other parents who are prepared to work hard to make sure that an override passes if we feel like things are going in the right direction. And I think that's the key to making the override process happen, is to get the buy-in from the key constituency to try to convince the rest of the town, which doesn't have kids, that they also want to vote for the override. And to that end, wanted to say that I really think that on the space issue, that the K-8 school is really our best option. I just want to put that out there, and I feel like a lot of other people through the last two two public hearings have gone through a lot of the reasons why, but I feel like there is not enough information on the 8-9 option and I think the super elementary school option is just a very bad choice for very many reasons. So in terms of an override and supporting an override and actively working for one, I would be looking for the K-8 school and I would also be looking for sufficient funding, not only to meet our space needs for the elementary level and the high school, but also to make sure that we have the quality education programs that I think we're used to. And core to that, and I've heard Dr. Lupini speak to this at some of your forums, is maintaining small class sizes, sort of the core, you know, place where all of our kids, no matter what their needs are, be on a daily basis, what their educational experience is like, is having the attention of their primary.
About 30 seconds to go.
Thanks. And the last thing that I wanted to say is that I feel like we need to, and I think this was addressed when I had to step out of the room, so I apologize, but I think there needs to be more input from parents and that there needs to be more than the two public hearings that have happened around the space issues. And from what I can see, the one public hearing so far around the budget, and I realize that that public hearing was just around this year's budget, but sort of looking longer term at the budget. And I would be more than happy to help, so I don't want to put out a suggestion without offering to help get more input, but I think it would be great to have more forums actually at the schools after drop-off where parents can participate. And I'd love to see more information going home and things like the homeschool folders. I'd love to see...
Okay, we have to finish now, please.
I'd love to see a greater diversity of our community represented, giving the feedback and doing things like making announcements about the meetings, say, in the homeschool folders in other languages besides English. So I'd just like to broaden who's participating in the conversation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Since I made the mistake before, are there any other people who would like to speak? Hearing none, I will turn again to Mr. Reed.
I think Mr. Reed would like to speak.
Mr. Morse? All right, so the first thing on my report is that the new technology policy was finally passed today after a very long time. Don't get too excited, though. Oh, hold your applause, it's only for a trial period for next year. I am pretty hopeful that it will pass after that, just going to see how it goes. In some ways, it's more liberal than the existing policy, so students are allowed to use cell phones in the hallways for certain purposes as long as it's silent. And in some ways, it's a little more restricting. Headphones are now banned throughout the entire high school, which is like teachers really wanted, so it was a good compromise between teachers and students. Secondly, legislature on the school larger sort of thinking about how we can enforce the existing test day policy, which mandates that each subject has a test on a certain day, but right now, it's not really followed throughout the school. So that would prevent students from having too many tests pile up in one day. And finally, I'd just like to put in a really brief word for the Race Real Series at Brookline High School, which have been really great. And there was an excellent screening of a movie last week about the Boston busing crisis. There was a really good conversation after it about how there's a lot of education about desegregation in the South and Little Rock, but you don't ever learn about the Boston busing crisis. Actually, no students in the room had ever heard of the Boston busing crisis. So it seems like we could, at the high school and at the middle school, benefit from more education surrounding local history, especially involving the Civil Rights Movement. And that's all I have. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Reed?
Yes, I'm not having to do with anything you said, but I was noticing in the tab today that the BHS, what are they called, there's a quiz show that they're doing.
Oh.
Do you know about that? Okay, never mind.
I don't know too much about it. Sorry.
All right.
Didn't read the tab this week.
Ms. Carter?
Funny you should mention the Boston busing crisis. I was just at Primary Source and there was a workshop going on about it, so I think it's something that teachers will be infusing into the curriculum in many places. But last year, there was a trip, there were some students who went south.
The sojourn trip?
Yes, the sojourn trip. Do you know if that is happening again?
I, Dr. Lupini, do you know?
I don't.
I think it's, isn't it independent of the school?
We don't have a, I'm sorry. We don't at present have a request for another trip, but I don't, but that doesn't mean one's not coming.
If there are no other questions, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. You have a copy of the report. There are three administrative searches that are currently underway. The Steps to Success Coordinator search has started. Amy Martin is chairing that process. We're in the process of putting together an interview team. The opening has been advertised and we're currently recruiting for that position. They should begin interviewing in early May and we hope to name a new coordinator by June 1st. Diane Landy has announced her retirement at Brookline High School as dean and so we are currently looking for a dean at the high school. The interview team is being finalized. Those interviews should begin in early May and we should also be named someone to that position by June 1st. Gary Schiffman and Hal Mason are co-chairing that interview team. And with respect to the K-12 Performing Arts Coordinator position, which was created by our combining of the present K-8 and high school roles, we're currently finalizing the job description for that new position and expect to be, or expect to advertise by May 1st and Dr. Fisher Mueller will chair that search. Mindy Palo recently reported to us that the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education released the 2012 Annual Measurable Achievement Objectives Report for Title III districts. Title III districts are school systems that serve more than 100 ELL students. The report results are based on the Massachusetts English Proficiency Assessment, the MEPA, and MCAS data for those students who are considered to be ELL. The objectives are set for students in three categories and we are one of only 13 districts who achieved all of the AMOAs in all three categories. So congratulations to Mindy and all of our ELL staff on that accomplishment. We'll be meeting with Advisory Committee, the Education Subcommittee regarding budget on April 18th at 6:30 and with the full advisory on Tuesday, April 23rd at 7:00. I'm meeting with the BDAC, the Brookline Extended Day Advisory Council Board on April 24th at 6:30 at the Lawrence School. And I have a forum with CPAC on the Special Education Parent Advisory Council on April 30th at 7:30. That's a busy evening. That meeting's going to be at Brookline High School following the awards program. We'll just stay there and I think we're meeting in the MLK Room, I believe. Can I just say, can I say one other thing about the exchange we had prior? So, no, I just want to say, so I wanted to make sure I said this as well. So here's the piece where I absolutely agree and we talked about this in the workshop. We are not appropriately staffed to do the kind of communication that we need to do in this community. I said that that night. We weren't on camera, I want to say it on camera, right? We need a communication strategy to do that right. It's going to take the right kind of staffing for us to be able to gather that information. I mean, we had a simple slice of that conversation here tonight, right, on buildings and space. Quite frankly, those are things we should be doing in a number of areas and we just aren't staffed to do it. I said this that night, I'll repeat it. This staff on the fifth floor is about the same size as it was when this was a district of 5,000 students and we're not. We're now a district of 7,300 students and more complicated than ever with many more complicated issues facing us. And we hope to begin to work with you, to start to put together some of that communication strategy so that we can then talk about what that's going to take in terms of staffing or consultants to do that and do it better than we're able to right now. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Carter?
I want to remind you that in fact, you are one staff member short because you, we, you and the school committee have chosen not to fill Oscar's job for the upcoming year. So that very important data staff member has been cut from the administration. Someone said to me recently, why don't you cut someone from the top administration? And I said, oh, but we have. So I think it's important to know that in fact, you are one staff person short, you know, than you were two years ago.
With a much larger student body.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Thank you, Dr. Lupini. We need a calendar action, I believe.
Actually, no, so let me talk generally and then point you to the 25th. So good news and bad news in the calendar. I'll start with the bad. How's that? So the really good news is that the BEU agreed to ask their members to give us feedback on the starting date, which you know was set at September 9th. Because of the collective bargaining agreement that says that school can't start before September 1st without permission of the BEU, which they had refused to grant earlier in the year, and because of the interaction with the Jewish holiday during the first week of school, we had recommended a calendar. It starts on the 9th. Unfortunately, that calendar doesn't end till June 20th, putting us right back in the mess of looking at the last week of June possibly again for the 13-14 school year. So I appreciate, I really appreciate that the leadership was willing to put that out to membership. They had a lot of interest in this issue and by a very close margin, voted to stay with the present starting dates for the school year. So we will still begin on the 3rd and 4th with students, or with staff, excuse me, and with students on September the 9th. I will say, I've already gone back to the union and asked them to consider now because I think timing was a large part of this, of the issue here. Teachers commented to me about being asked so late. So we've gone back now with a calendar for 14-15 and asked for that rule to be waived now for the 14-15 school year. And the leadership has agreed to talk with their larger leadership group about that after they get a few other important issues out of the way in May. So beyond that, you know that we had language that specified collaborative days, collaborative time once a week that would extend the school day by 10 minutes a day, create a 40-minute collaborative time each week. We've been discussing for some time the difficulties in that model for parents and quite frankly, we think for staff members in the short period of time that it creates for them, given when students would leave, when the students would actually leave the building, how much time would actually be left for staff members. And we have come to, we keep using this term "bridge" a lot these days. We've come to a bridge agreement on that for next year where we will add a series of early releases that will be, look much like our present early release structure, that is 12-30 times. They will be spaced throughout the year. I'll give you the specific calendar for the 25th when I ask you to consider this in a first reading. Our long-term goal is to put that in place as a permanent kind of measure with the added time onto each school day to look seriously at the number of days that we utilize for conferences because it's a lot. Four days is a lot for parent conferences. I've not quite seen that in a lot of other school systems. We're going to have to look carefully at those days so that we are sensitive to the needs of parents with respect to these early dismissal days and yet, as I said in our discussion earlier, provide the kinds of collaborative time that we know we need for teachers to do the kind of work that we're asking them to do, given that we, unlike most of the districts around us, only have a 183-day school year. Most of those districts have far more than that and we're being asked to do a lot of work with teachers around a lot of very important issues with very, very little time outside of the classroom. And so we've agreed to put together a group to take on some of these issues, look at the collaborative time over the next year, be able to put something in place permanently for 14-15. But in terms of what we've agreed to do here in terms of collaboration, we think we've got a good model that bridges us through to something that'll be really special starting in 14 and 15. So again, I'll provide, I didn't want to ask you to consider this a first reading because quite frankly, we finished it up so late. You'll get this probably tomorrow or early next week for discussion at our meeting on the 25th.
Great. Thank you. But you get more airtime.
I do. Can I stay here? Is that okay?
Sure.
All right. So, budget update. Well, so at our last finance meeting, we provided the school committee with information regarding the possibility of charging for kindergarten. And essentially, what we were able to put on the table, thanks to Mr. Rose's research, was a two-pronged problem. One, we faced the possibility of being adversely impacted long-term because we happen to be one of those minimum aid communities. That is a community that is at the floor of state funding and you know that the floor is rising. So the interaction of having students, less students considered as part of the aid calculation with the increase in the floor, the rising of the floor, would have meant serious repercussions for our Chapter 78 in FY '15, not in FY '14, but in FY '15. So that's one. The second, more practical piece was really around the definition of when students are enrolled. So the Department of Education says in their published rules around charging for kindergarten that you can, you must put your policies in place, your schedule in place for charging prior to enrollment. Now, we can say that registration is an enrollment and indeed, the department said to us that they were willing to work with us around that issue. But quite frankly, to me, and I know to many of you, registration is enrollment. We have 520 students who are enrolled here for the 13-14 school year. So for those reasons, we recommended at that meeting that this conversation be removed from the table and I believe that's what we decided to do at that meeting. There was a conversation also about allowing private money to support initiatives that we weren't able to recommend in the spending plan and there's been a lot of discussion about that, both at that meeting and then in a finance committee meeting tonight. And we will, at your request, continue to talk with, start by talking with some of the organizations who do support us, the 21st Century Fund, the Brookline Education Foundation, and the Community Fund about what they view the impact might be if a sort of a general ability to contribute to the school's operating budget and staff were to be set up. And I think also to continue what those conversations might look like, particularly with the Community Foundation, if such a fund were to be set up, what the particulars of doing that would be. And I believe we've been asked to report back at the next finance meeting, which we will do. So that's our main internal conversations. As you know, we've been waiting for the next step in this wonderful state budget process. You know that the governor put out a budget in January, a budget recommendation in January. You know that this community chose not to take the governor's numbers in that, he called for the largest tax increase, I understand, in the Commonwealth's history. Would have drove $2.8 million in Chapter 78 to this community. We budgeted 1.7, thinking that was a realistic number, given where we were last year, given what we were hearing from legislators at the time. But then we have to go through four, well, four, five, six more steps, right? The next step following the governor's budget is the release of the budget recommendation from the House. from the House Ways and Means Committee. And that happened earlier this week. And unfortunately, the recommendations that they've made don't permit a, don't, don't meet the 1.7 million in Chapter 70 that we've budgeted. Now remember, that Chapter 70 money, like other funds that come to the town, are split. So those, that funding is down about 407, 60? $66,000, which means our budget is short, as we sit here tonight, by $233,000 over, over what's recommended and before you. Forget about restorations. There are also some other moving parts within what they've put forward to the, to the House. There are some moving parts in, in early childhood. There are, there's an increase to circuit breaker in the neighborhood of $5 million, but we don't know the impact exactly on us, what that would be yet. And we believe, based on the information we have from Metco, Inc., that there's a cut of $1 million to Metco. A cut. But we've not been able to confirm that. That is the information that Metco, Inc. has put out, however. So there's some moving parts and the House begins the debate on their budget the week after school vacation, the 22nd. They begin the debate on their budget and expect to have a budget during the following week. And then we go through this all again with the Senate Ways and Means and then the full Senate deliberation. And then hopefully, these parties come together as they're discussing transportation funding and other interesting topics and come to a state budget. I have spoken pretty extensively, as, as Mr. Rowe, with the town administrator about what's on the table in front of you this evening versus what we have out of Ways and Means. And, and Mr. Kleckner has indicated to us that he would like us to move forward with the commitments that were made back when we did the original Town-School Partnership discussions of this. That is, to assume the revenues exist at this point that we originally put into this budget. And, and we have, we have an upcoming Town-School Partnership meeting. We'll see that House budget adjustments will be made from there. I, I, you know, I said earlier in our finance meeting that what he has indicated is, is, and I think we all know this to be true, that, that should that money not come from the state budget somewhere, finding it within this, this town's budget will be difficult. It will mean, it could mean backing off some commitments in terms of OPEBs and reserves and free cash. And all of those things will be on the table, depending on the amount of, the amount of money. Certainly things that change real elements of what ma- what's made this town's capital improvement plan and other elements of what we do successful. And so we're going to hope that that's not where we are, out of the House budget and, and when the Senate does their budget and when the governor gets together with the Senate and House to, to do their work. But for tonight, therefore, we're, we're still in a position of recommending the revenue picture that allows us to adopt the budget essentially as stated through Addendum Number One. You know, I too have not given up on restorations. We've, we've talked to you at that finance meeting and since about ECS, about the elementary music, particularly that part of the, the general music that is in grades K through 3, about the high school staffing, which we believe is one FTE short, and about the math specialists that we've reduced in this budget. In a perfect world, we believe we should be funding all of those things as part of this spending plan. That's an additional $625,000 between those four items. And so we'll continue to look for creative ways of, of, of doing that. We'll continue to advocate with our, with our legislators. And Chad, I really appreciate what you said about people contacting them because they, they do listen. That's, that's, that's what they hear. So, so that's where we are tonight in terms of timing and in terms of our operating budget recommendations. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Lupini. So Dr. Lupini will answer any questions and then we have to proceed to our first vote on the budget. And Ms. Kershaw, you may want to say a few words before we do that, but right now, are there any questions for Dr. Lupini? Ms. Ditko.
This is more of a set of clarifications, just so I'm sure I get the math. So there is a, as we stand tonight, and there are many more steps in the process, there is a new $466,000 hole.
In the town and school budget combined, 233 in each, yes.
And so what that means is that any, any conversations with the town about restorations or funding or anything else have to take into account the fact that they are looking at a new hole also.
That's correct.
Okay. And that as we think about, you know, the types of cuts that we're already contemplating and what we would consider the kind of education we want to provide, you're looking at another $625,000 in restorations. That includes ECS and technology and the math, I mean, there are a number of different pieces that we would say are important, I mean, sort of what we would consider core to a budget that we're not able to put in.
It includes ECS, it includes at least the K through 3 general music, it includes 1.0 in high school staffing, and it includes a 1.0 math specialist, yes.
And then just in terms of our ability to, our flexibility after this point, we have, under collective bargaining, a deadline of April 15th to notice teachers. And so our ability after this point to look at what is a fairly substantial part of our budget is limited, right? So can you talk a little bit about what type of flexibility we have today that we will not have in a few days from now?
Sure, I can. So notices have, have gone out. They've been done between yesterday and today because our deadline is the 15th and of course, that's a, that's the first day of the, of the holiday, of the vacation. And so we, we, we did them yesterday and today. Once we're past tomorrow, essentially, you know, I mean, we, we say all the time that staffing is about 80% to 85% of our budget. So that means essentially 80% to 85% of our ability to reduce, our budget is off the table, except in the case of resignations. Mr. Rowe pointed out earlier in our finance meeting that that's indeed how we freeze spending, right? We don't abolish positions. We, we don't fill positions that become open. I mean, should, should this get more serious or, yeah, more serious? I mean, that's, that's, that's what we could be facing down the road is, is freezing an, an FY14 budget before FY14. And that is not filling other open positions because that, outside of that remaining 16%, which is classroom materials, professional development, those kinds of things, that's what we would have left to be able to do after Monday more, after Monday.
So if I were to add up the $625,000 in things that we think are quite, quite important, added to a $233,000 hole as we stand today, that's roughly $860,000.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Lupini, I don't know whether you agree with this, but it occurred to me when we were talking about it before, that the notice idea, the, the public might not be completely familiar with the notice idea.
So, um, so our collective bargaining agreement, so employees must be noticed for the following year if, if you don't intend for them to return. Sometimes that occurs because of performance and other times it occurs because of budget. And we're talking mainly here, mainly here and have in my experience, about pre-professional status teachers who are in their first three years. Although in the case of the music reduction this year, it, it was some people who enjoy professional status and that's a slightly different process. The state law says that that deadline is June 15th unless it's negotiated to be a different date. And in our contract, it's April 15th. So we, we must, we must meet that requirement. And you'll remember from our discussions that we must have a budget in order to meet that requirement. If we don't have a budget, we really can't notice people against a, a theoretical construct, right? Budget in my mind. So, so that's what tonight allows us to do, is to move, move forward with what, quite frankly, we've done over these two, these two days. And, and those people can be recalled anytime after that. In fact, many times I've been in a position where we've started rescinding those notices the following week. There are districts, I will tell you, just, this may be more than you asked. I'm sorry if it is. There are districts where they take no chances on these kinds of things and they notice everyone who's non-professional status pretty much on an annual basis. I've been doing this a long time now and I've never been a subscriber to that view of the, of the world. I believe we have to narrow it down to the people who really are being non-renewed for performance, first of all, and second of all, the other individuals who really face, you know, a possibility of losing their position should, should budget go in a certain way. And, and that's what we've done. I think that's a better way to go, always have. I never found those other exercises to be terribly great for morale and for kids, quite frankly. So we, we've spent a lot of time narrowing that down, a lot of time communicating with those people through their principals, through coordinators, through Dr. Allen's office. And, and as I said, proceeded to issue those both yesterday and today. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it certainly does. It was mostly for the public because it occurred to me that they might not understand what you were referring to. Okay. Ms. Kershaw, looks to me as though you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we might as well do this. We have several actions we need to take in order to approve the budget. So I'll say a couple of words and then have a number of motions for the committee to consider. So we have had two finance subcommittee meetings since the last time we met and have spent an enormous time on, amount of time on this budget and as has the administration. This has been, I think, one of the more difficult budget years. Certainly, I've only had a short tenure, but for those of you who've been here longer, and we have walked down many avenues to try and avoid some of the pain that we are going to take action on tonight, including dark alleys like kindergarten fees and, and also considered funding staff for, you know, with private funding. And I, I think all of the, all of the work we've done so far has led us back to, with the best information we have today and the revenue picture we know that is sort of available in a, in a very changing envi- and in some ways, unknown environment, that, that we have a responsibility to take action based on the revenues we know and, and not to do things that are outside of state regulatory requirements or that are going to cost us additional funding down the road. So after many hours of deliberation, we are proposing a budget that, that does actually do a number of really good things too, and I think it's important that we recognize that. We are preserving and maintaining many, many of our most important core functions in the budget. And we're also moving forward some really key initiatives around literacy, bullying prevention, teacher evaluation. We're making some critical changes and, and planning for things at the high school around special education services that I really feel proud of in this budget. And we're also making a number of reductions. I mean, we've talked about them at great length and, again, tried to find as many ways as we could to do something about filling the hole, which is really caused by not enough revenue. And we look forward to working with the community in the long term to try, to really try and build the sustainability into our budget over the time for the kind of quality education that all the kids deserve at every level of academic achievement. The other thing I just, I wanted to say is that as hard as this budget is, even, even in its current state, it has a lot of areas for concern that I think we need to keep our eye on as we continue to go through this difficult process. We already came across one of them with our assumptions about what the revenues were coming from the state is in question at a time when we're already having to make personnel decisions. This budget is also based on an assumption of a kindergarten enrollment of 600, which is the best information we have right now about what it looks like, although enrollment has been an area of big unknowns for us. So I think that's an area of vulnerability. Special education services is always an area of vulnerability for us and we have budgeted as best as we can, but I think we're tight in our margins around contracted services. On that point, we have a, a very small contingency that we've allowed for in this budget, which is smaller than the amount of funding we've had to rely on in contingencies in any of the past previous years. So that's an area of concern. We also are relying on some consolidations or a consolidation in enrollment levels at the high school that we are hoping will, will bear out. And if they don't, we'll have, we'll have additional challenges. So we do have a Town-School Partnership meeting on April 26th and the Finance Committee will meet again on April 29th. And this will not be the last conversation we have about the budget. But I want to recognize the hard work of the administration, Dr. Lupini, Mr. Rowe, and your whole team, and how hard you've worked to try and find ways for us to do more with less. And, and you've done a magnificent job and we're still in an incredibly difficult position. So with that, I will pause for any comments or questions from Dr. Lupini or from members of the committee and then we'll proceed to our actions.
Dr. Warren?
I think you, you referred to this in a general way, but the general education contingency of $224,000, sorry, $225,000 is very, very small. The, and the consolidation of one elementary classroom is a fond hope. And the lower kindergarten enrollment is challenging credibility as well. So we'll, this is a very tight budget and, so, thank you.
Other? Ms. Gata?
I've heard people say that money doesn't really buy good education. It's not the money, it's the teachers, it's all kinds of things. Well, the truth of the matter is, if you don't have the money, you're going to have losses in your education program. And I will vote for this budget because we have to have a budget. But I will do it with regret because I think we are losing some very important prog- we are losing a very important program, the ECS. I certainly hope it can be put back. There are many, many children in our school system who rely on it, but every child in our school system benefits from it. I also regret that we are losing the music and there are, there are other things if you begin to pull it apart. So I think that it's important for everyone to realize that, in fact, money does buy good education. Money doesn't guarantee good education, but money certainly helps to provide good education. And every time we cut our budget, we compromise our ability to provide the kind of education we want to provide our children in Brookline.
Ms. Ditko.
So I second everything that Barbara said. The, the one comment that I just want to put on our minds is the fact that we are in a five-year strategic planning process right now. And there has been a chipping away even in this budget. Without question, there has been a chipping away in this budget in the last few years as well. And I think that there's a, a growing gap in my mind between some of the ambitions that we are talking about in the strategic plan and that the parent community has been very clear in expecting of this system and what we've been able to deliver, or budget, budgetarily, I don't mean our educators, I mean, budgetarily support. And I guess what, what concerns me a great deal is there are very rich conversations at the strategic plan level and in the parent forums. We're hearing deep feedback from parents on wordsmithing to, to an nth degree. to an nth degree around rigor, around relevant curriculum, around bringing struggling learners up to grade level, around, you know, making sure that we're committed to advanced learners, making sure we're committed to equity, making sure we're committed to all of the new interesting things that are happening in pedagogy that are so exciting in terms of non-cognitive effects on academia. And I mean, all these really tech, new technologies and different models, different modes of learning. And there's so much exciting going on. And as I think about the ambitions of this community and I think about the kinds of ambitions that I've seen our educational leaders express and the expectations of this community, and then I look at this budget, it is going in exactly the opposite direction. And like Barbara, I will vote for it because I have to, because we need a budget. But when I think about a lot of the, a lot of this chipping away, it, it makes me really nervous. And so I think when we think about what does a properly funded district look like, what are the ratios that we need in terms of literacy specialists, math specialists, ECS specialists, nurses, I mean, everything, that I do hope that we have the conversation of we're, we're doing things because we have to. But even, even without all of the bells and whistles and being a leading district in terms of technology and some of the leapfrogs, even just getting us back to fully funded for the size we are at is a leap. And then on top of that is a second leap in terms of leapfrogging technology, leapfrogging some of the other areas. And I just, that gap has become increasingly large in my mind as I watch the divergence of those, of those two conversations. So like, like Barbara, I will vote for this because we need a budget. But, but I just think that this community has higher aspirations and expectations and we're going to need to have that conversation also.
Well, I, thank you, Ms. Ditko. First of all, I wanted to thank Ms. Kershaw, who neglected to thank herself as opposed to the rest of the staff who've worked on this because you have worked very hard on this and suffered along the way mightily. I also want to thank the staff for their hard work. And I want to thank particularly Dr. Lupini, who felt obliged to offer some alternatives, which we hadn't thought of, that he really disliked. But he felt that they needed to get on the table just in case. And that was very responsible. I also want to go back to what Dr. Warren said because in each of the last few years, we've run through our contingencies that were, that were more robust than the ones we have here. And, and I think that causes us all some serious concern. And finally, I want to point out that one of the problems we have here is we have this growth in our student body, which we're proud of on the one hand. And on the other hand, we, we are not able to generate the revenue to even support that growth on a straight-line basis because our tax revenues don't increase proportionally as that student body grows. And we can't, we can't generate enough revenue from our state at all. So it's the growth of the student body in relation to what we're not able to generate in revenue, one way or another. So thanks, Amy. Thanks, everybody. And I guess we're ready for the vote.
Before we go too far down the, I, I think it's also important to say that like as difficult as this budget is, incredible teaching and learning is happening every day in our schools. So I come to school committee and it's very difficult and complicated. And I take my kids to school and I went to the fifth grade band concert this week, which was incredible. And my son came home from a free field trip to Olmsted Park with maps and eyes wide open. And they're studying the sun and the moon and the, it's, you know, despite the difficulties of this budget, we have an incredible school system. And I, I walk in those schools and I think it's better for me just to stay there because, because the, the teaching and learning is going on every day in the hallways. And so it feels really difficult here. But I think we have to really recognize like how amazing the educators are despite the environment and our administrators are despite how difficult it is.
We're glad you came over here.
Oh, that's not true. Okay. So we are going to take five related actions. The first is related to a town school technology department. The second is approval of sort of the actions that have led to the net growth. So those are the reductions as well as the increases that are happening. We also are going to take an action related to accepting general fund appropriation and the other revenues that make up the budget. We're also going to take an action related to an increase in the BEEP program tuition fees. And finally, an increase to the staff materials fee. So it'll be five separate motions. So on behalf of the administration, I'd like to move approval, I would like to make a motion to approve continued participation in the combined town school information technology department as outlined by the memorandum of agreement between the superintendent and the town administrator and as established in the town bylaws passed at the special, special town meeting in November 2004. Thank you.
Are there any questions? All those in favor, aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. I would also like to make, make a motion to approve, as submitted by the superintendent, the specific actions that have been listed in attachment A, which we discussed today and you have in front of you, related to the net growth. And these include both the program reductions that we've discussed at some length, as well as the additions in, into the budget.
I'll second that as well. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Third motion I'd like to move is approval of the fiscal year 2014 general fund appropriation of $82,586,770 as allocated in your attachment B in your packet and discussed earlier. That will be supplemented by $3,57,163 in tuition revenues, building use fees, one-time revenues, some circuit breaker revenue and some revolving fund reimbursements, which brings our total operating budget of $85,643,933.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chang. I was exhausted.
He's only seconding the revenues. Did you get that?
I did. Smart strategy.
Yes, it is. The fourth action we have in front of us. Sorry. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. So all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Now, Ms. Kershaw.
It'd be hard if we voted to spend but not receive any revenue. So the fourth motion before us is I would like to move approval of a 3.5% increase to the Brookline Early Education Program tuition fees, consistent with the rate chart that we've provided to all of you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Finally, we are in the second year of a five-year schedule that we approved last year of increases in fees to the staff materials program, which allows town and school staff to attend schools. So I would like to move approval of an increase to the staff materials fee to $2,490 for fiscal year 14, as detailed in attachment D in your handout.
Marvelous again. Thank you, Mr. Chang. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Nice job, Ms. Kershaw. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Rowe?
I just want to point out one thing. Incorporated in the base budget is $100,000, is, is a $100 per sport per season fee increase that we didn't vote explicitly. It's part of, because the money goes to a revolving fund. If you believe that you should take a separate action to vote that, you could. It is part of the superintendent's message.
Yes, I think they should.
I, I agree with that.
Thank you for pointing that out.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. I would like to move approval of a $100 increase in the annual fee for sports for FY14 or-
Per sport.
Per sport.
From 200 to 300, Mr. Rowe.
From 200 to 300 for the school year, 2013, 2014.
Ms. Chalobski?
I'll second it, but I also have a question. What is, do we have a maximum per family?
We do, we do not in this calculation. We, remember, we did an analysis against the conference. We found that we were at the low end.
Yeah, I remember that.
There were some, I don't have it in front of me, but there were some that had family caps, but I believe they, they ranged in the $1,015, $1,500 range. We didn't, we did not build caps into this. We did not have caps in our previous structure.
Right. No, I, that I was aware of, but I was just wondering if we shouldn't, well, I know we have the ability to do scholarships for anybody who can't afford to.
We do. We do. And, and remember with those, what we did instead here was we centralized all of our collections.
Right.
I believe that that's going to make us better able to, to, to look at a total, total picture, not just by the way in sports, but across all programs that we charge in and make appropriate adjustments.
So maybe we could ask for, for sometime, you know, in the next year this time, just sort of a report on how that could be at the finance subcommittee.
I think that's a very good point. I think there's a good discussion to be had at some point about what that collection looks like, what it looks like to a particular family, what are families playing, paying in a number of areas in early education, combined with athletics, combined with X or Y or Z.
Usually you don't have both ends, but-
No. Well, usually you don't, but-
I did.
But I know them. I know some of those people. And, and so we can, we can certainly do that and discuss it with the finance subcommittee. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ditko.
This is sort of an, an annoying point, but I feel like I need to channel my husband, which is that if anybody is affected by a fee we're voting on, there's a disclosure form. If anybody has a BEEP parent or anybody is an athletic, gonna be paying an athletic fee or, we didn't change food service, but that was a few years ago. Anyway, there's a, or materials fee, I guess there. Any, anytime we vote on fees that anybody on this committee is affected by, I mean, there's a form. I can send it if anybody, I can send it to you if you want it. You have to disclose and you file it with the town clerk.
Okay. I guess we're done with the budget. Oh, we didn't have a vote on it. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Right. Okay. Okay. We're back to the athletic fees. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We're way behind schedule. The, in the school committee workshop, I think that the richest discussion revolved around the, the strategic planning activity, which we learned a lot about. Now, let me just say, we did spend some time on B space. We've, we've spent a lot of time on B space tonight. And so I'm not going to say anymore about that. I will say that we also talked about district and, and superintendent objectives from here to the year end. They included coming to grips finally with what, what the long-term space plan that, that we want to select. We also talked about completing the educator evaluation process. And we also talked about completing a balanced budget. Those were the three objectives and Dr. Lupini raised, as well as he has spoken earlier tonight about the communication issue. And Ms. Ditko, I'd like to give you as much airtime as you want regarding strategic plan. Sorry, I can't give you more.
No, that's fine. And given the lateness of the hour, yeah, why don't I do this next time? Is that okay? I mean, I think that the basics were that the core values are more or less still the same, that the four goals are still essentially the same, although there are some important tweaks to them. And we are still hoping by the end of May to, sorry, by the, by the end of June to at least have a rough draft. And then over the summer, there'll be a lot more detailed work. And I think the, the, the piece that got a strange amount of discussion was what is the research base behind some of the changes? And where, what's the difference between sort of having language in the strategic plan that is specific and research-based, but not too jargony for, so professional language, but not sort of too jargony for, for the public to understand? And if there are places where we're replacing old language with more updated evidence-based language, what is the simplest way to draw that line for people so that people understand what is the research base as it evolves and how does that inform our thinking? Because clearly the research does evolve and, you know, non-cognitive is a great example of that where, you know, five years ago, those things were not as honored in their place in terms of affecting academic achievement as they are today. And questions around rigor relevance and relationships being a triad of, of ideas. Anyway, a whole, a whole series of things. So why don't I table it until we have something more, more clear and people can think clearly about it? But that was the basic conversation.
That's fine. You're implying that we no longer are thinking clearly, but that's okay. I don't resent that. Thank you very much, Ms. Ditko. And is there any new business? Regrettably, I have to say that we have to go back into executive session to conduct strategy discussion in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. And, and we need to poll the committee once again. Ms. Corn, Ms. Corn?
Ms. Chalobski, please. Mr. Chang?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mean you want to stay for this?